Open the meeting at 9:00 AM. We're gonna have the cafeteria this Saturday. And then I'll go ahead and read through all the rules and those long, long rules and stuff that I gotta read for the RSA's. And then from that point, I will go into reading in each individual warrant article. And then I will introduce its author. And so obviously, that'd be your school board. So, and then I would introduce whoever you would wanna have for a person to introduce the warrant article, what it meant, why did you do what you did. So, so the first warrant article then would be is the operating budget.
Does that get presented by us or the MVCs?
The MVC does the budget. So that's Terry Roy is the MVC chair. But if you guys have somebody that would wanna follow?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, very good. Okay, the second one is the, it looks like the collective bargaining agreement between the State Fire Department School Board and the Area Educators Association. So who would like to speak on that?
I'll take the lead.
Okay, great. Yep, and that's if it's defeated, okay. Okay, and then number four is the vote to raise an appropriate sum of $150,000 for the Special Education Trust Fund. So who would like to present that one?
I've been doing probably four and five. I'd be happy to do six and eight. I'm happy to do four and five. If you're doing one, I can do four and five.
I'm sorry, can I be standing?
Can I be standing?
Thanks.
Number six, I'll do that, that's common.
Okay, in your...
Actually, I could do seven too, if you want. Up to you.
So you have number six. Number six was the tuition?
Yeah. This is sort of a sign, you know, to number six, but, and we can talk about this later, but I will be putting forth a motion to amend number six, sort of immediately after.
Oh, okay.
So Kendra, would you take the lead then on that one, to try to make sense?
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion from off the bat, man.
So what we'll do is we'll, I'll introduce the warrant article, and then I'll introduce you, Kendra, and then you're gonna, you can literally start by saying, "I'm gonna introduce a motion." So that way, we're discussing what's, we don't need to discuss, and then bring back, oh wait a minute, I'm changing all the words. So, and then if you can, we'll have somebody sat in it, and then we'll open it for discussion. And then following that, we'll vote with whoever's in the community, and shall pass then that amendment would be in play, and that's what we discuss from that point.
Okay.
Very good. And number seven was to create the high school tuition spending trust fund?
Okay, I'll do that one.
How do I spell it?
E-L-L-D-M.
Number eight is the district...
Why don't you do that, but why don't you do it exactly?
Whatever you guys would like, I'm more than happy to help.
Why don't you do it?
I'd do more than happy to.
Is that, okay. Zach's on number eight. Number nine is the SB two rescinding of SB... What's that?
I'm more than willing to discuss that as well.
Excellent, excellent.
However, I could be of assistance.
Number ten. This one is to tell the Deerfield School District vote to authorize indefinitely until we send it, the retention of year and unassigned general funds.
So it's the up and down, right?
Yep, so who would like to?
I can do that.
Kendra? Okay. Okay, so there's that. Okay, this is quick. Not that many articles, questions on any of these that I can help you with?
Will you specify as you present them, or should we? Some of these are able to be amended, and some of them are not able to be amended. Right, and so is that something that you wanna address as you read each one?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, exactly. So if it's written per an RSA, then we can't amend it. So that's basically the rule of thumb. So if it's an RSA prescribed one, then it's a contract, things like that, you can't amend it.
I just mean, where we're there to the public, would that be what?
Oh, yeah, we would mention that.
You say each time?
Like last week, we had zoning amendments that you can't amend, so we just introduce it for discussion.
And the SB two?
Yes, correct. SB two, that one is, again, when it has the RSA right in it, then that gives you the clue that it's written per RSA, you can't amend those. You can't amend anything that changed the subject matter. So this is a rule of thumb, so when doing amendments to a warrant article, you can't change the subject matter, but you can change the other verbiage to it. So that's, if that's about.
Yes.
Last question, presumably you've lined up either Dean or his associates.
Yes. I think he has. I'm not sure if it was coming yet, but someone is.
We'll be right back.
Yes.
Okay, and then I don't think I have anything else on my list. Was there any other questions that you guys have that I can answer for you? Seeing none, all my favorites. I'm outta here. Okay, great, so I will see you all. If we can have the school open at 7:00 AM?
I've already spoken to...
Awesome. Mallory Sound will be here to do all the setting up.
Yep, we've set up, he's gonna pull in the back, we've...
All coordinated there, so awesome. And I think nothing on that, no, I think we're good. And if you have anything in the meantime, don't hesitate to reach out, but I think we'll have a great, great Saturday morning, so.
Thanks, Kendra.
Thanks, guys.
It starts at nine. At what time do we need to start there, right? I remember that was initially last year.
Yeah, they should definitely be there by 8:00, 8:50. Should be a good time. So just in case there's a car accident down the road, which happens a lot here, you know, good to have a little extra time built in there. And then the clerk can get all the paperwork set up and all that stuff.
I'll reach out.
Should give us all just enough time to stop and get some coffee before she has to leave.
Before she has to leave. But for you, I would say between 15 and 30, I don't know. That's fine, I don't mind you, whatever.
And we're in the cafeteria.
Yes.
To the cafeteria.
To the cafeteria.
To the cafeteria.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thanks, John, good, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'll do the same, everyone.
Okay, now we have fire suppression. We have a few guests here joining us for this. Thank you all for coming. We have Chief Fisher, Mr. Dubianski...
Whatever it is I do.
Yeah. And then a host of engineers behind us, people who worked on the fire panel project. So thank you so much for coming.
A big table.
So the board invited everyone to come to the same room because...
John, is that a big chair?
I don't know quite as much about the situation, but I wanna sort of get everyone in the same room so we could figure out how we can get the fire panels project closed down. So, yeah, does anyone wanna take the lead?
Yeah, why don't we just start off so we can make sure everybody's thinking the same way. So we have had two, I guess, phases to this project that we've done so far. So the first phase was the control panel. Three years ago, I guess at this point, our control panel failed. And we worked with our engineers, the fire protection company, and a fire protection engineering company to design a new panel, and we got that part done. And the second part of that project was then to go through and update, replace all the devices, new wiring, and bring the building up to current fire protection code. And there's a particular code that is referenced, what is it, FPM?
NFPA.
NFPA codes.
And the building codes.
And the building codes. So that work's been done. And that project is completed to the extent that we have installed what was on the prints and the plans that went to the state and to the fire department in Deerfield. There was, or there has been a request for a couple of additional devices, for some additional work to be done and added. And so we need to get, wrap that project up, and try to figure out how to get this done so that we can finish the contracted part of the work and remove old wiring, which is all, I think part of that's in code as well, correct? The removal and tearing of the whole setup. So during the wrap-up on the install for the new device part of the project, Chief and John, myself and Chris, there was a couple of items that we wanted to add, and then that kind of grew and grew and grew, and started to really exceed what was originally drawn out in the original prints and plans. So, you know, we collectively as a board need to figure out, A, what really needs to be done, so we can wrap up the project. And we wanted everybody on the same page so that we can close this out. To date, we have a system that was installed meets all of the NFPA codes. And we just need to figure out what needs to be added, what's additional, where is it based in existing code, and how do we make sure that we have a completed system so that we can wrap this up? So maybe you gentlemen can kinda talk to it a little bit, we can reference this, or we can try to go from there.
Sure. So, yeah, I would say...
I think I gave a fair enough summary.
Yeah, close. I wanna say, yeah, back in 2020, the alarm system really started to hit end of life. We had been, or the school had been experiencing some troubles and some issues with the existing alarm panel, which somewhere in the system before that, but I wanna say it was the summer of 2020, myself, Assistant Chief Dubianski, me, Chris was brand new, and Tim sat down in cafeteria, and started to formalize what was somewhat of an initial design of, or draft idea of what replacing the system might look like. And through that discussion, there was a handful of questions that were generated. I just showed the fire marshal's office some input, hats on my own input, and responded back. And from there, that is the basis of my understanding of when the alarm system started, to come to fruition of replacing it, right? Where we were going from there, this is the roadmap that we laid out. That was in 2020. There was some discussion, the alarm system kept going, right? It then reached end of life, then there was some follow-up emails with an engineering firm, design architect, I think that was in relation to the addition warrant code that was floated a couple of years around then. Again, that same information was forwarded along to the whole existing team of parties of, from my standpoint, this is what I was looking for, this is what I was under the expectation the system would be. So, yeah, as Zach mentioned, right, the system finally just died. Got to a point where we had to replace it, started with phase one of replacing the alarm panel downstairs, which because of how it just basically ended, the issues it had, it was not making notification to the outside world for the fire alarm. You'd pull one of the handles downstairs, inside the cafeteria, dispatching had a rule about it, the alarm system on the second floor of this building, either would or would not go off if it was activated. So it got to a point where it was done. I believe the first step at that point was a temporary panel?
Permanent.
Did we do the temporary, then the permanent, or the permanent right away?
No, we just did permanent right off the bat, starting meeting.
So it was a permanent panel that was put in during that time. We had a fire launch in place, because the sprinkler system was still working, but the fire alarm system itself was not. And then I wanna say that following year, monies were available, and the design of the new system started to take place, was reviewed and sent back, and that was my understanding, was bid upon and put in. And after the installation period, there was some communication back and forth, we had some meetings here to review some things. And then on the walk-around to, let's say, final acceptance, test the system, is when I had noticed that we, I guess my expectations of we were gonna have detection in other classrooms we have now, was not there. It was pretty evident, if you walk around, the new detectors aren't there. Also with that, walking around, there were a few items that needed to be addressed. There were some rooms that don't have notification in them, which need to have it. The gymnasium currently doesn't have, has the old detection, but my interpretation of code of NFPA 101, gymnasiums have to have detection. So I think there's some back and forth there that needs to get ironed out. The initial plans didn't show anything in the gymnasium. We had, one of the meetings was looking at that, and we identified, I think there's 11 heat detectors there now?
Yeah, we knocked it down from the heat detectors to a reasonable amount of smoke detectors at that time.
For the gymnasium and the...
Yeah, I don't know the exact code section, but I'm almost 95% sure that smoke detectors are not required in gymnasium, if it's fully sprinkled.
Okay, I believe the detection is required.
Sprinkler active detector, NFPA 72. That's how you get around automatic detection of sprinkled building.
I would currently have to disagree with you on that, according to NFPA 101.
And so I think this is where some of this discussion is coming from, right? So we...
Please, yeah, please.
So, you know, this project started off, obviously with the alarm panel, that was all done, and everybody's good there. When we worked with the engineering firm, well, the architect, the engineering firm, and then the contractor, there was two sets of prints that were produced and sent to the state fire marshal's office for review. I know one of those sets of prints, the state fire marshal's office had a couple of clarifying questions, I think there were some battery loading calculations, which might be a little foreign to me, but I know there were some questions to bear for that, and a few other items. I believe that went back and forth, and then there was a final set of design, I refer to them as design drawings on my end, but I don't know if you guys have a different term.
Yep.
The final set of design drawings that went back and forth, that I know went, again, to the state fire marshal's office as well as to Chief Fisher, I don't know who else would've seen him from the apartment. And so we have installed what we believe to be, and this is maybe questions for the engineers and the architects, we have installed what we believe to be a fully code compliant system, part of the designs and the drawings that we provided both to the state and the town. And so if there's maybe some discrepancy in translation of the code, maybe we need to just kinda root that out, and obviously if there's corrections that need to be made further codes, that seems to make sense. But we wanna wrap up the project, and we need to figure out, are we missing three detectors or something that are as a quick fix? Or are you asking us to rewire the building? Or where are we standing? The current solution we have is the old system is running in parallel to the new system.
The old detectors.
Sorry, the old detectors are running in parallel to the new system.
Yes.
Which is in its entirety, and some stuff had to be unplugged or deactivated because of the old system and the way it was running and whatnot. But we wanna wrap this up, and the contractors need to wrap up the project, obviously, with us as well. So I know we've been reaching out to try to get this meeting together, and finally we're getting it together, but how do we wrap this up? How does everybody get on the same page so that we can put this to bed, right? And obviously, what we're looking for is if there's code that's missing, that's really what we need to, if we have items that are missing per code, or they weren't done to the designs that were reviewed by everybody twice beforehand, that's one, I guess, concern that needs to be addressed. If there's some punch list items that are, you know, a couple of basic things that I would expect any project of this size, but we need to get, we need to get resolution, which is what we're trying to do, and that's why we want to bring everybody into the room so that we can try to find some level of resolution here. I am not an NFPA guy.
So I guess leaving one of the meetings that we had right before school was starting, my understanding was we were considering this phase two, and phase three would be the gymnasium and what happened. So I guess, is the intent to wrap up the whole project or the phase?
Well, that's, I think what we need to figure out is, I know when we were talking about in the gym, right, we said, you know, we had to figure this out, talk to the board, so obviously here we are. But, you know, are we looking for a couple of smoke detectors, and if I use the wrong term, please somebody correct me. Are we looking for a couple of smoke detectors to add into the gym, and then everything else is good? Or are you saying the prints that were provided to you in the fire marshal's office aren't satisfactory, or didn't meet code? Because there's two different things that we have to address, right? Like if, and I'm not, if we didn't get what was designed, then that would be a concern with the contractor, which I don't think is the case. And if what was designed doesn't meet code, then that would be a concern we would have with the architectural firm and/or the engineer that designed it. Or are we trying to build something that is outside of code? And what are we trying to build that's outside of code? And how do we know that what we build or modify or change is gonna satisfy whatever that standard is that we're trying to achieve? Am I making any sense?
I think I'm clear.
Okay, so are we looking for, what needs to be done, I guess, for the, because at the moment, unless you tell me otherwise, I have to assume that what was installed was what was on the prints, and what was on the prints is what was approved by the fire marshal's office. Am I correct in that?
I believe the only comments I remember coming back from the fire marshal's office, whether it was non-approval or what have you, was just design calculations, which I believe the implication was something that would be after.
Yeah, usually the battery calculations are provided in the shop drawing process, and at that point, we had not, I think, the timing, we had not received the shop drawings yet. That's standard boilerplate information for something that they would request, but that gap between bid versus us receiving a shop drawing was, I think, when they reviewed it, that was one of their line items.
And that was between the first and second set of drawings, I think is when they had asked for those calculations?
I believe so, yeah.
If I recall correctly.
So I think I only saw one set, because I had sent...
They were, I saw two sets. So there was two sets, there was...
Because I had seen the set where I sent the fire marshal's office, and they'd sent that looking for the calculations.
Right.
So I mean, if that was the first or the second, I don't know.
Right, so, so I guess, Matt, what I'm asking is, did they build, did we get what was bid? And so that's, I guess, a question, or the best of your knowledge, did we get what was bid, right? And then the second question is, is does what was engineered meet the NFPA standards that we have to apply to schools? And again, we contracted, the people we contracted because they design systems for schools, they're familiar with it, they're fire protection engineers, clearly much smarter than I am. But we have to rely on them, and then are we trying to get, what are we adding if it's not in the code? Because if we have a non-code compliant system, then frankly, we probably have a conversation that doesn't involve you at this point, other than your roles as fire chief, it would involve the people behind me. If we have a code compliant system that was installed as per the prints, then we need to figure out why it isn't signed off on, and why we can't wrap this project up.
So I guess, I know there was some back and forth in regards to the gymnasium, but, you know, what I'm looking at, just particularly about the gymnasium of NFPA 101, Chapter 15, which talks to existing educational facilities. Auditoriums, cafeterias, and gymnasiums are protected by heat detection devices or other approved detection devices. So I'm looking at that heat detection or some sort of approved detection device is clearly listed for gymnasiums.
Sorry, sprinkler is a detector. Is there exception for it being sprinkled?
Yes.
Should be right below it if there is.
So the only thing in 15 that speaks to sprinklers is that if there is an approved sprinkler system, it shall activate the fire alarm system. But we were talking about doing the gymnasium...
Right, so I guess, I guess, I don't wanna, no, okay, can I just take the lead?
You are welcome, because I was really not involved in most of this. Please go.
So that was phase three, or whatever we had talked about. So, I mean, is that, we're talking about wrapping up the project, is that still being discussed?
There's the gymnasium, and then I think there's the overall school, so I don't know which part of the stuff.
So, I mean, is your concern strictly tied to the work that we discussed in the gymnasium and adding?
No.
Okay, so what are the rest of your concerns, and where are they outside of code, as we understand it?
So it could be, you know, I don't know how the plans of the work generator, I can assume, right, every year, I get a map of the school, what room is what, where is this for, and that, right? There's, on the second floor, when I went here, it was the computer lab that we played, more about trailing, right? That, that would I believe, what's that?
You're showing your age.
You know, that, I wanna say that room's missing a notification device. I'd have to review all the rooms that are in the stairwells, right? I was even looking at the building permit, that those were storage rooms, they're being used as offices and stuff, and I don't know with calculations if you can actually hear the notification of the alarm system going off in the sanctuary stairwells, in those rooms, offices, whatever they're actually being used for. And that's part of my concern, is that the system can be designed today, or whenever it was a couple of years ago, based upon whatever map layout that was given, of hey, this is what we're using now. I know the schools in a different layout, classrooms are different than when I went here. Sure, that's great, but, you know, my point of view would be, you know, what, how do we best protect current the school, right, and everybody in the school? Am I looking, when I responded in 2020, asking for this, that, or my understanding of this, the question was asked? The classrooms typically, the classrooms typically have 135 heat temperature, fixed temperature, rate of rise commensal heat detector installed in the center of the room. Will those still be required, or can they be omitted as the building is 100% sprinkled with full detection of hallways and corridors? So yes, for, you know, per code, it's hallways and corridors. My response was, yes, they will require to be maintained addressable detection in each room. And that's another key part to me, is addressable, right? So right now, if the fire alarm goes off, if the sprinkler system's activated, what notification am I gonna get?
Auto flow.
Where?
On the next floor, yeah, first or second floor.
How big's the building, Chris?
Square feet, I do not know.
Okay. I'm guessing it's a lot, right? When we came here in the middle of the night for a fire alarm activation, happened to be one of the old sensors, the roof was leaking. It's happened to say second floor. 2:00 in the morning, whatever it was, it was John and I. It easily would've been me, myself, and I. So in this community, right, I know the more information we have upfront coming to something, the better it is for us. So if it's addressable in the classroom, I know where I'm going. Not just floor, not just if it is a corridor, if the sprinkler system is all I'm gonna know is water flow, where do I go? Now, that's after hours, that's, you know, people not in the building, but even when I came to school here, my fifth and sixth grade, I went on field trips for three or four days because of the teacher I had. If no one's in that classroom, how big's the fire gonna get if there is one before anybody knows about it? When we were here for that same issue, we found one of the classrooms that had Christmas lights plugged into the ceiling, hanging from the ceiling. Those aren't listed or approved for any of that application to be on over Christmas break, weeks on end. So what I'm looking at is what's the best for, you know, for the, in my mind, longevity of the school, if, God forbid, there was ever an issue, finding it, getting there, and, you know, to take care of it. So yes, if per code, are heat detectors, smoke detectors, I would prefer smokes in the classrooms, required by a code? No, they're not. Am I asking for something above and beyond? Yes. I'm a master electrician, I know the code is a minimum. Does Deerfield have an ordinance that says X, Y, Z? No, we do not. But these are things that I feel were laid out, well, that was August 16th of 2020, of our expectations moving forward. John and I have worked, I think, really well with the school, giving time for things to happen, and allowing things to move on in phases in progression as can be, right? My understanding is the plans, I reviewed them today, don't even show the modules. Now, I know they were added, work was done, I've not seen a plan including the modules. One of the things I'm asking for, now there's CO monitors in there now, I would like CO detectors in there that are hooked up to the alarm system. So that way, hey, if a teacher shows up 7:00 in the morning, and there's an active CO leak, two days in a row, someone else in town, we had CO calls, one of them had over 100 parts per million in it. two days in a row, someone else in town, we had CO calls, this, one of them had over 100 parts per million in it. So it can happen. So if I, before a teacher shows up, the alarm's going off, I know about six o'clock in the morning or wherever, we're able to get here and help mitigate the situation before a teacher walks into this modular classroom all by themselves.
So I think my, my bigger question to you now is, this is the stuff that should have been discovered during the design phase, when you had the prints for review. Or, or discussed when you had the prints for review, right? Because when they were sprawled out on the, on the bench, that would have been the time to, to kind of say, hey, how about this, or this, or this, or this? Because right now, it's another redesign of the system, right? If you, if, if we add another 50 devices or 100 devices, we have a panel that can support it, but I don't know that the wiring that was installed was installed to support all the additional devices. I don't, again, I don't know how that part of the system works. But when those plans were on the table twice, wasn't that the time for all of that stuff to be reviewed?
Right. I don't know about twice, because I believe I only got them once. So if there were twice, I don't believe so. Um, and in my mind, I, I'm not a fire protection engineer, I'm not a fire alarm installer, right? I, my trade, I'm a practical installer. And I know if the code is, right, every existing device has to be removed and all the wiring has to be removed.
Correct. Because we can't do yet.
Well, at the same time, you're removing those devices, you can install new ones and pull the wire in.
That sounds like a significant amount of work.
Yeah. To maintain the Class A circuit integrity, I mean, it's, you know, it's in and out, it's, you know, off through all the ceilings again, I mean, it's just as much effort as.
The first time.
Yeah. You know, especially when you're doing it after the fact, you didn't really incorporate that thought in the original wire pulling. So you kind of have to backtrack on what's been completed. I mean, nothing's impossible, don't get me wrong, but it is a substantial undertaking.
This, I guess, you know, another point is this building's changed. When it was first built, there was no sprinkler system, from my understanding, correct?
Correct.
Right. So if a building is unsprinkled, there is requirements for smoke detection, heat detection, detection coverage in every room within a building that is non-sprinkled. Once the building got sprinkled, I don't know when that occurred, what the timeline.
1990, 2000.
Okay, so around 2000. So 23 years ago, the building got sprinkled, the system's still in place. We get approached, we come along with our design, the building, as we walk around and noted, is sprinkled. So then that changes, you know, what we do for design. And we're not at minimum code, we're, we're, we're sort of in between. We've, we've got extra detector coverage in the corridors, which isn't really required except for fire doors. So we're kind of in this, this middle phase with our, but that's sort of the history of the building, because that certainly kind of tells a story as well, so.
I think, I think my, my concern though is that it was made very clear from the get-go. And I, I think, I think I only missed one meeting when I had, while I had COVID. Um, is that even from that very first meeting where we sat down in the gym with Chris and Tim, um, and that the chief was, wanted no loss of detection coverage in those classrooms. He wanted devices in those classrooms. Um, it is absolutely an AHJ issue. Right? So it's over and above the existing code, but the code very clearly states that everything defaults back to the authority having jurisdiction, which is the fire chief. Um, it's in his email, it's in the minutes of that meeting. Uh, I believe it's in the minutes of the meeting that we had where everybody was here, um, that, that the chief wanted devices in all the classrooms. So I, it, it.
And that's the, you know, sorry, I didn't mean to cut.
And, and so it didn't make it on the plans.
Yeah, so we, so just so you know, as, as designers, there's, you know, personal stuff that towns want, fire chiefs want, there's things that are specific to towns. This is why we have three, we have a fire department review set of plans that be sent out. We have the final stamped set of plans that were sent out. And then we requested that the shop drawings, which incorporate four plans as well.
Four plans to vice versa.
By the fire chief. So those specific things that a town, fire chief, fire department may have, that are above and beyond, get addressed because we certainly, you know, don't know everything. So I guess it was, you know, I'm assuming everything got there, but, you know, basically three looks at this. To, I don't know, pick up those.
One set of plans.
Those areas.
So I guess we need to try to find a path forward. Is the path forward the stuff in the gym? Is the path forward, we need to put another bid out for another 100, I don't know what it'll cost, 100, 150, 50, 25, I don't know what the dollar amount is. And then what standard are we going to apply and how do we know that? How do we, how do we solve this issue? Because right now, there's a little bit of an impasse, is that what standard is this system being held to? If it's, if it meets code and it's approved by the state and everybody had a chance to review it, and it was installed as, as the prints indicate. Um, and it's a sim- system that, from my understanding, is similar to what is being operated in a number of schools in the state of New Hampshire, as well as some very, some brand new buildings, because typically similar designs, similar systems. And so that the system is basically the same architecture. The system is in, I think you said Oyster River.
Ankerton, Wannasquon, I mean, Allenstown.
Bedford School.
We just finished Oyster River, Oyster River was all 60 million dollar.
Sure, and let's say, you know, Allenstown, Oyster River, those are brand new schools?
Uh, Oyster River, Oyster River's brand new.
Yep.
Some of them are, some of them are renos.
That was brand new.
I think Jake, Jake can probably speak.
How old are they, much older than this building?
Same age as the building.
Okay.
But, you know, what, how do we, how do we, and maybe Jake can weigh in. I don't know how these projects normally go, but I just.
Can I make a suggestion of maybe like a halfway point for everybody? Can we take a smoke detector that's outside of two classrooms? You can add 90 characters to the nomenclature of the address and address that smoke detector to be corridor 201, outside of classroom 202, 201.
So I guess my thought.
So that gets you in the direction, the floor.
And the neighborhood.
Only if the teachers are properly, their doors open, which they're doing, which they're not supposed to do. If the doors are closed, that doesn't really, smoke's not getting out of the classroom.
Standard for doors, are they supposed to be open or closed?
Closed. They're not supposed to be properly open. And that's a consistent problem in the building where, to the point where John's gone around and picked up ledges that are keeping the doors open. So these, these are things that, you know, we, we've addressed, we've brought up, and it's why I'm asking for this. And I, and I think, you know, maybe my explanation tonight hasn't been clear enough. But that's really what I'm looking for, is detection in all the classrooms. That's what I've said in my emails going back to 2020, that's what I'm, I'm saying now. That's what I'm looking for. You know, there's been comments in, at almost every NBC meeting or deliberative session that I've been at since fire chief of a member of the school board trying to put a dollar in the full-time line for the fire department, in case we ever needed to go with full-time people. And I, I think that's great. Talking about safety of this school, well, this is my push for safety of the school is detection in classrooms.
And we, and we talk about the, the system being compliant to the fire code. Um, the, the chief already has kind of started to touch on it, is you got to understand, there's a lot of parts of this building that do not meet current fire code. Uh, so you have a building that, you know, like these, we actually, we actually did find an application for the, uh, the building permit apparently, but, you know, none of those stairwell enclosures meet fire code, they shouldn't be there. Right? They, you know, the, um, the offices, the storage rooms, um, you know, the, there's just, you know, we spent a long time talking about it. But there's a lot of aspects of this building that met code in 1990, when the building was built. But don't meet the current fire code. And so it, it to me makes sense that we might have to go over and above the current NFPA for detection when we're trying to protect a building that doesn't meet the current NFPA for construction. And it's not anybody's fault, right? The, the building is just old, you guys are out of space. Um, but there's a lot of stuff that, when I do my walkthroughs, that I kind of have to, like, uh, you know, Chris's office. Right? There's a fuel burning, uh, water heater in there. There should be absolutely no storage of anything in that room. But where else are you guys going to put it? Right? The, all the stuff that, you know, children have in their clothing in the hallways in the winter, none of that should be there. But where else are you guys going to put it? So those, those are the things that we kind of, even spaces like this, right? When you have a whole bunch of kids, you know, I, I did one of my walkthroughs and there was probably 50 kids over in this corner, I don't know if that's a normal thing or not. But, you know, with only currently one way out, it, it barely fits. And again, you guys are using space like you have to, and we understand that. But at the end of the day, the, the, whatever edition of NFPA 72 and 101 and 1 and uh, 1972, and all of the codes that one has to dig into to design and install a fire alarm system, um, are all based on current fire code sitting in a building that doesn't meet current fire code. You know, and so we, we hopefully can address that when you guys get a chance to, uh, to put it, you know, through a bond for renovation and reconstruction, we can address all those issues. But as it stands right now, there's a whole bunch of stuff in this building that just doesn't meet modern fire code. It, it did 40 years ago, 30 years ago, when I was 10 and wandering these halls myself. But not now.
So in regards to like, I'm wrapping up the project, I, for the phase, I mean, if, if that's our plan moving forward is what I remember being, the, the phase was the, the new system that was installed, I, you know, I, I would think the phase is complete, yes.
The problem we have is we can't remove the old system because we are still running those detectors.
Okay.
Which means we can't finish that project, which means we can't even technically onboard that system fully. We have, and, and maybe there you can join in. I mean, I don't, what typically happens is in these circumstances, am I missing something here or?
No, you, you have it right. So typically we'll do the design to make the drawings for, for the state fire marshal.
Yeah. So I guess I'm just, I don't know what the solution is, but I feel like, I feel like at some point we need to, we, we've put in a system that is state of the art by every standard that is measurable, we have $300,000 into upgrading, right, about that, buddy? Between the first phase and the second, probably closer to $300,000 worth of upgrades that we've made to that system from, from a 25, 30-year-old system to today. You know, I think at one point, where there was questions in the gymnasium, it seemed like a relatively simple thing, there was one couple of devices, that seemed reasonable. But to say after we've already gone through the review, the design, the engineering, and frankly, the people that should have, the people, everybody had an opportunity to weigh in during that, that process, right? When it's all done, to try to, to try to add a bunch of stuff that wasn't planned for, it's a difficult thing for me to really want to get behind because if I needed to pull extra, I say, I, if extra wire needed to be pulled, we would have pulled it in the beginning, it would have had a minimal impact on costs in the design phase. A huge impact on costs down the road. And I am all for making this building better. And we can walk around this building and see what's been done in the last five years, and know that we have made improvements everywhere we can. Um, and we have worked with every dollar the taxpayers have given us to, to address these things. But we also, you know, we have to keep in mind that the taxpayers, I think, would have, would have expected this and wanting to deal with in the design phase and not afterwards. So that's my hangup, right? If a solution could be, and I don't know exactly what is entailed, but is it to make the smoke, smoke detectors in the hallway?
Yep.
Smoke detectors in the hallway addressable to help your department locate a concern, it's already a thousand percent improvement above what you had before.
But actually, I do have questions regarding this phase, the incomplete items. Um, this first off, do we have a plan for getting, uh, the indicator horn and strobe on the front of the building? Because there currently is not one.
Yeah, they're, they're way up here in the corner. There's a red and a green beacon both mapped correctly. But beacon is mapped, it's a fire alarm.
Came in the other night.
I don't remember when that night.
Yeah, they may not be functioning. Um, and then I had sent an email, uh, several months ago about getting the system turned up.
Yeah, well, that, that again is a, is a massive undertaking. We have to go to every single horn strobe that's installed and change the setting, which then changed the voltage draw, which then, then changes, uh, the power supply.
We did our walkthrough, we made it seem like it was part of the, what we were doing, and it was just a matter of.
You mean, is that a handful of devices?
No.
Yeah, I mean, where?
So just so I know. So the first couple of fire drills, general feedback from staff and students, and coming from students even, like even first graders, is that, um, they weren't able to hear devices over the dead of classroom noise. And that was, it was said multiple times by multiple staff and multiple students.
So there's two things, your original system, just so I remember, the original system was a horn strobe. So it's, it's, in general, it's.
Yeah, this is the voice, this is the voiceover.
Four, six times as loud as a voice. So what we typically see in a, in a fire alarm final sort of walkthrough with uh, towns and cities and departments is we'll walk through certain areas, yes, some areas, you know, for instance, in here, we have carpet, we have bookcases, may require, you know, some adjustment, because I think they have dip switches on them, right?
Yeah, they have jumpers on top.
Right, so you can change the wattage. You know, for wattage, correct, correct me if I'm talking on.
Yeah, quarter watt, half watt, eighth watt.
So we, we see that those changes and adjustments need to be made for the fire department typically there. You know, they're made a couple of rooms here and there, whatever it is, generally the hallways are pretty, you know, audible, because of the, you know, the VCT, the dialing and stuff like that, so. It's not out of the realm, we don't see stuff getting requested to be changed and adjusted to, to, to tighten the system up.
So we did our walkthrough, it was the three of us and Chris in an empty building. You know, you add 500 kids being kids, kind of changes the dynamic a little bit.
But that sounds like, that sounds like a reasonable rein finger remedy. Right?
Do it instead. Uh, my understanding, hasn't happened yet, that was a couple of months ago.
No, it hasn't.
Yeah. But that sounds like a reasonable finger remedy. That's, that's adjusting existing devices that were already installed. And, and so that, fine, like, that's, that's easy enough to do. But rewiring the building again seems like an almost unreasonable request, given the point that we're at in the project. So trying to find a reasonable solution is what we do. We want to turn up the volume on the strobes, great, or the horns, whatever it is, sure. And we can ask the contractor to, to do that. If readdressing devices, because the system supports that, that seems like a reasonable request. It will have a, a cost, but not a excessive cost. But to rewire a portion of the building or the whole building or add additional wiring into the building starts to seem a reasonable request. And we have to, we have to come up with a solution that is reasonable and fair, given the design having been done, the system having been installed, and the project being at or near completion.
So let's hypothetically, right, if, Tim, you walk me through something, right?
Yeah. Technical end, you got to go there.
No. Um, so we'll pick the classroom right to our right, right?
Okay.
Not the library, but the classroom.
All right.
So if we were to put a detector in there,
Yep.
where does that wire have to go?
It has to come in from the hallway.
Yep.
Loop to the detector location and then go out back into the hallway to the next detector. So we have to continue the Class A loop with about, with, with 18 inches of separation.
Okay. So we have to go from the classroom, basically run two wires or a single, but two pair of wire?
Uh, two, four, two in, two out. There, there's going to be four wires in each, in each M C.
So like four, single wires or like a multi-conductor wire?
A, a single piece of M C with four conductors inside, two in, then two out, so eight copper conductors overall.
And the feed and return have to have separation?
Correct, it's a Class A, yeah.
Okay. How would you assume the existing wiring is set up? Because every room already right now has a detector in it, that has to be removed and the wiring has to be.
I would. You're asking on the existing wiring?
Yep.
I would think they probably punched. I would think they probably punched into the classroom laterally and ran it right down the middle, that's a total guess.
Okay.
Down the hallway, then down the classrooms, because they're all zoned that way, like second floor, east or whatever they call the zones.
So you have to take, you have to open up the ceiling tile, get the detector, and then take down all the wire and that goes each wing of the building.
In the demo phase, is that what the question is? Yeah, we, 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 we have a number into remove all the accessible wiring boxes and unused devices, yes.
But you're thinking. Keep in mind the existing devices that weren't, weren't addressable. Just so everyone knows, an addressable device, it can tell you that, that, you know, that's an old smoke detector, but it will tell you that it's smoke detector, second floor, east wing, outside classroom two oh one. Like you physically give it a, a name and an address. The system before didn't have that. System before wasn't a speaker system, that's required now by code as well, so, you know.
Politely asked you to leave.
This is on the second floor, that's why we started to look, the drum went that way, I went that way. I found water on the floor that way.
Before, because it was in your room.
No, this was like a month ago.
That was that two o'clock in the morning when it's just John and I showing up.
I didn't know about that one.
So you're thinking that this on a loop system, they literally just took the shortest path with twenty-two points?
Yeah, because if you look at the detector location of the classroom, they're pretty much in a straight line. So it looks to me, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that for a fact.
Probably runs in the direction of the, of the, uh, the beams, the concrete beams.
That's what my assumption is.
I can't remember which way they go.
But we're not, we're not really utilizing the old wire, it's still be all new, you know?
It has to be new, I mean.
Yeah, there would be no value in connecting to the old wiring going this far with the new system.
And new detectors are basically little computers.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is, is it reasonable to say readdress a number of devices? So that every smoke detector, smoke, smoke, smoke detector that's in the hallways or the codes are addressed to the rooms that they are nearest to? Is that, is that a reasonable solution? Turning up the volume seems like a reasonable solution.
And at my next fire drill, I can spend some more time walking around if the kids are willing to spend more time standing outside, which I'm sure they are, um, trying to figure out where the.
Do you want the whole system?
Well, if it is, so I can, I can dig into it a little deeper.
Yeah.
Um, the, the first fire drill that I did in, uh, in September, uh, there was quite a few folks that came up. Because, because the previous fire alarms scare the crap out of them.
That, that has gone away.
Yep. And, and I, and I, and I'm taking into account the fact that we're going from a system that screams at you to a system that very politely asks you to leave.
Yeah.
Um, but there was, there were quite a few folks that, that said if it weren't for the strobe, which of course is the benefit of having a device in every room, um, they wouldn't have known the fire alarm was going off. But again, is the point of having the visual in every room?
So, so I guess I'm asking you, chief, are those reasonable steps to resolve this? This, are those, are those reasonable remedies to your request?
Well, let's draft a punch list, right? Because then a while since we walked around, came up with a punch list, those two items are certainly gonna be on it. Let's, let's review the rest of the system.
Okay. That's a reasonable request on your behalf. So, I mean, certainly if we can do that, I think the board is interested in trying to wrap this up before my retirement, because I probably know more about it than anybody sitting at this round table.
I was, I was supposed to like, we're at the household, when you have a fire drill, if you do a survey and ask all the speakers in every room, did they hear it?
Presumably there's a standard.
Subjective, there's a standard, you know, like.
It's too subjective.
Yeah, you, you know, one person may have harder hearing than the others, so, um, on, on the prints, once again, the speakers were showing that they're, they're tap wattage, so it's all part of the design, because these rooms have a calculation for the output of the speaker. So, uh, I could certainly change those, but I matched the ceiling height versus the room use.
And I think part of it that you addressed is that we were used to in a school having a screaming loud. So when you're just hearing a voice telling you, you know.
Well, there isn't a company horn as well, or, or noise.
I could see them saying, wow, that was hard to hear, but yes.
Yes, yeah.
There's an adjustment.
Right, and I guess the question is, is it, was it, and I wasn't here.
Try tone three, I believe is the correct term.
Temporal.
Temporal three, yes.
Was the system, was the system hard to hear? Or was the system different, which creates the impression that the system's.
So it, it, the visual devices are an improvement, right? Because then we had a fire drill prior to the new system where when my firefighter was doing the walkthrough, they came around the corner and the library was still hopping with kids, because they didn't even know the fire alarm was going off. That was in the old system, um, because with both doors closed, you couldn't, you literally couldn't hear the fire alarm in here. So adding the visual is an improvement. However, based on the room use, as, as Tim led into, the code calls for there being, that the, you have both in visual and audio, so that people can, normal hearing people can hear the audible alarms. We, and we, and that has to be, we have to make sure that is like the cafeteria is one of the places where I was told that the kids had to kind of like get the attention of, of people on lunch duty, and they're like, hey, the strobes are going off, we need to, and I don't know, but they're in there, like, you don't do, you do during the lunch, but they were in the cafeteria for some reason. Um, so there may just be spots where the calculations alone, um, you know, you really can't apply math to a hundred kids, right? It's, you know, so there might be some places where we have to go a couple of clicks above what the math says.
That's a lot different than the whole building, you know?
Yeah, which I think, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's.
You guys do the basketball tournament, which I've attended, I think, if that's full and people are cheering, you know, that's part of that temporal tone is to sort of get your attention, settle in.
As long as they're plugged into the right outlet, the sound system will shrunk off, that's new too.
Right. And then you'll hear, you know, the intent is not to keep going on, and it's hard with kids to keep screaming. You start hearing the temporal tone is to settle down and listen to what's going on. Same thing if you guys came and already here and needed to make an announcement over the microphone.
Yeah, we have to override.
Entire school, right?
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously the, the function of the more of the commerce system is to allow staff to give kids directions during emergency. Um, but they need to know there's an emergency first.
And, and so to me, those are commissioning things, when we finalize the commissioning of the system, those are those little adjustments you make when you commission a system. And I'm sure in your world, it's the same thing, there's timing things you have to tweak, the little changes you have to tweak when you install it. You know, South Willess streets and traffic lights, they're not timed right if you did it in a team, right? So, but that's the commissioning stuff that you work out, you put it on, you sort it out. So that to me is not, like, that's not really what, we, we'll correct it, needs to be right. It's the plus, 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 plus stuff that is, is my biggest concern. So, I mean, if there's a, if there's a punch list that you want to work out with these guys, then we can come to a reasonable kind of solution without rewiring in a whole bunch of stuff. And, you know, ideas about addressing the devices that are already in place, that seems reasonable. One more volume, reasonable. A device or two in the, in the, in the gymnasium, depending upon, you know, what you guys, the codes are and all that stuff about everything, that seems reasonable. But, but we still have to recognize that the time that we should have made drastic changes outside of the code if they're in the planning phase, when everybody had the opportunity to review. So I mean, if, if that's, if, if that's the approach you want to take, that's great. But can we try to put a timeline on it as well, so that we can, if we put a finite end to this project?
I want to say the plan for decommissioning the old system was this summer.
It's actually true, but I haven't been out, but now, because it was really supposed to be over the vacation.
Yeah.
The original plan.
So even given the unknown of this situation, we're not gonna get.
Even the gymnasium was this summer because of the floor, that's my recollection from that in August. You aren't gonna get a lift in here and this and that, vacation, the region, the gymnasium.
Yeah, there was that, certainly that potential, so. You know, but to, to at least finalize the plan, I think we need to try to resolve that sooner than later. Because you see, it's been, obviously, we're a busy guy and travel a lot, and getting all these guys here is difficult. And I turn to a pumpkin in three weeks, in six weeks or whatever it is. Um, but we really need to try to just wrap it up so that there's a finalized plan that you're comfortable with, that the board, whoever is sitting here can be comfortable with, that these guys are comfortable with. Also, as importantly, is that is reasonable so that we're not asking the taxpayers to do it twice. If that makes sense?
Yeah, we, yeah.
Um, you mentioned just in terms of the taxpayers, yes, keeping the kids safe is obviously our, our primary goal here, but, um, but we need to think about the taxpayers as well. How, so I, I feel like I'm not hearing from you clearly that you, I think on this side, we're saying that there were three opportunities to look at the plan. You're saying that you saw the plans once, as you remember, and not sure about a second time.
Correct, I'm not sure about the three, I, I would not commit to.
Would your initials be on the second copy if that happened? Is there a way to go back and just figure out whether you have a chance to see the second? The opportunity was there, it sounds like either you did or you didn't, but you're running a suspect that you did.
It'll all be by email.
Okay.
So we see it a couple of different ways, we'll see it written, here's my comments.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes they'll request a meeting, we'll sit down, we'll, we'll be made available to go over those certain items. You know, sometimes it's better to meet on site just to go over, you know, there's a, I think there's a comment about a flammable cabinet or something like, something like that, you know, that we, we would pick up and address. Um, and then, yeah, it could be even an email, I guess, these six items that, you know, I'm curious about.
And then once. Yeah, it's much, I would like to know whether you saw it a second time or not. I feel like there's a little bit of certainty here, you saw it once, but then we're running, we're running a different system. You didn't look at it a second time, if you did, you know, I don't know, I would be double clear.
And then those shop drawings, it's kind of like, that's like the last line of defense, like, he's got his manufacturer's cut sheets, the drawings, the drawings are all point to point, all the addressing is on there.
So, so I, I guess if I will, right, my, my world of shop drawings is here, this is what we're using. Not, and, and this is my, you know, I, I'm not the fire protection engineer.
Yeah.
I'll submit things of here, this is what I'm using, and the end user or the engineer will approve, yes, you know, hey, I'm using a smoke detector. I'm not gonna know, you know, from my mind, I would not expect shop drawings to show me wherever, every single device is gonna go and say, hey, this is the brand, you know, traffic signal controller, signal head, all that stuff. That's my understanding of shop drawings, and that's what I, I look at.
Unfortunately, in the fire alarm world, we, that's, that's, we request that.
Every wire is shown, they're all color coded, every cabinet location was shown with identifiers. And then we do a riser diagram by floor, starting with the fire alarm panel, and we showed every cable going everywhere. And on that drawing, notification was read, and a horn strobe was left in the classroom with no other, all the initiation was in blue and white.
And that's his drawing basically, still my drawing.
And that's how the computer counts it, when we drag and drop it, the computer counts the voltage drops and all the other stuff for us.
Does more of us have that built, is that?
It was his drawing that I just dumped into my CAD program to design, right? It creates your addresses, it creates, tells you how many you could put on a loop before you overpower it. So it's the exact same thing he provided me, I just overlay my, what.
And so I feel like the design and getting you the specifics even one step further, because it's gonna be whatever manufacturer, spec and all that stuff.
Right, which backs into the battery calculation, which is one of the comments from the state.
Correct.
The amount of devices and voltage calculations are really ripe, aren't they, make sure you're not overwhelming any circuit?
Yeah, and the batteries can support a standard of power.
Going forward, I guess, again, thinking about if we're gonna be in this town, working on a police station, working on all the other things that are, that we need to work on, if you are gonna be asking for, for standards that are beyond what the code is, that the state accepted code is, if you're going beyond that, it sounds like there was some miscommunication here. And hopefully we can address it, but going forward, I would hate this to.
No, because of this, I reached out to a third party and was back in front of the helping with the, this type of situation.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding and the research I've done is that additional codes are typically part of the town ordinances and are, are tracked, and I think recorded for some stuff through the state as well. And so, you know, if, if, presumably the city of Manchester, right, we just put on the biggest star in our neighborhood, they have a bunch of staff that is gonna probably have a bunch of different things that apply to the city. Twenty-story buildings, this and everything else, but those codes are all recorded, additional codes are recorded and recallable by anybody that is in the industry that knows how.
Codes, specifications, yes, very similar.
So they know how to go find it, right? And, and eons ago, when I designed mechanical systems in Manchester, it was very easy to go through and say, hey, Manchester requires this, this and this as well as, but it's been twenty years since I've been in that world.
Sure, and I would say.
Nothing is easy in Manchester.
Since twenty twenty, I've been at, you know, I think it was item two on the list of my response to what I was looking for. So I would say the communication's been thereof, this is what the fire chief's looking for since twenty twenty, and was forwarded in emails a few times. So in, in my idea, this request is not new and should not be a surprise.
Other than it wasn't caught on the prints.
Sure, it wasn't caught on the prints, yes.
When you have.
I don't know how many times, but yeah.
So what's our, what's our, just to make sure we're on the same page, our plan to move forward is.
We're gonna review our punch list. The folks that.
And what do you.
August or November.
And so.
September.
The requirements for, where do you stand on your requirements for all the additional devices in the project?
Let's review the punch list.
Okay. When can you be available? Is that something you can do in the next week or two weeks? Or what's your, what's your proposed time, timetable to be able to have those discussions? And Kendra, I can, my thoughts are that we should try to wrap this up over the next meeting.
I would love to.
Or two, so I mean, we have.
What is your meeting schedule?
We have a meeting in two weeks from tonight. It's the. Let's see, we want to fall into twenty-first, and then we will have a meeting the first, Tuesday of March, is the sixth. And I turn into a pumpkin shoulder thereafter, and you never have to do it.
I'm leaving for Florida on the seventh, so the sixth isn't gonna work for me. Must be nice. Okay, by the way, I'm leaving.
So is that, is that something you can, you can work and do your, I know you have a business drawn as well, but is that something you can do work into the next couple of weeks?
I think so.
Okay. So if you can possibly lay some times out with Chris, I mean, and, and Chris can bring the rest of their team together, and.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're all three in the same room at the same time, or the same walkthrough at the same time.
I mean, just tell me when, obviously, this is. I can be available. Somebody had a running punch list when we did the walkthrough, I, I may have a copy.
Yeah, I remember seeing one, and also I just, I guess, so obviously.
It, it might be on my desk at the station.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking timing, obviously, because there's gonna be a punch list to walk through. There's gonna be stuff that needs to be addressed, so I guess I would defer to you is, you know, reprogramming, maybe adding nomenclature to specific devices in the hallway.
Am I doing that to be proactive, my wedding flat is a punch list, right?
I would, I would punch lists.
We're gonna punch list it and get the requests out, what needs to be done, and maybe, I don't need to sit in for this.
Because I think for the punch list, I think we should have another, also the surprise fire drills, but, um, have one and see what the response is before we even go down, what's gonna be listed on that punch list of what needs to be.
Yeah, I know, I, I, you know, I know each town's different, but honestly, that's what usually a, a walkthrough with the fire department, they ring the system, it's not loud enough here, he has a guy at the panel, they make adjustments.
Well, we, we did that when it was just the four of us in the building.
In an empty building.
Different ones, schools actually in session.
Yeah, all the classroom furniture was in the hallways because they were cleaning, I mean, it was a whole different.
So I'm just thinking, if it's a week or two.
Done even.
Get out here to meet, he's obviously gonna have time, because the programming and readdressing is done in the office. No, we'll do it here.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do it right there off the laptop. So there's obviously, you know, if each device is gonna get a different address as a compromise, you know, there's some time with that. So I'm just thinking, you know, he's gonna, I'm just gonna, two weeks after, we need to have a punch list to get maybe the punch list stuff wrapped up, and we can get a sign off, and you coming back in April vacation?
Well, probably this summer, just, I'm guessing you've already scheduled, yeah, to demo the old.
Yeah, well, let's see what the punch list is for, with the time for allergies.
Okay.
Easy, reasonable stuff.
All right.
And I know, I know some of the stuff on, there was like a flammable cabinet and, you know.
Which, you know, it was directly that classroom next door, so.
Right, I was just gonna say, sometimes when we do our walkthrough, you know, when we leave, rooms change, stuff gets added, stuff gets moved around, so, you know, we typically see a half dozen devices that may have to get added.
And that to me, those are reasonable requests, right? This is a specific thing over here we want to address, or a specific thing over here, that's a reasonable, to me, that's a reasonable request. To redesign a significant portion of the system is an unreasonable request. But if we, if we can agree that in two weeks, we have another meeting here, is that, is that fair? I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get something set in stone, so that there's a hard deadline that we all have to meet. Obviously, the deadline's harder for everybody other than the board members here. Obviously, the deadline's harder for everybody other than the board members here, because it's all of that to do.
Make sure we have a fire drill in that time period. Is that really a good surprise? It will still be a surprise.
Well, I would ask.
Possibly even me.
If Tim is available to, I don't know if it makes sense for you to be here during a fire drill to hear the devices themselves, or does it not really help?
I'll just make sure I do it on a day when I have enough help to walk the building in a reasonable amount of time, so that we're not asking Brian and Kristen to control five hundred kids for twenty minutes outside, we'll just make sure we have.
Take a nice day.
Make sure I have, I don't promise that, but I'll, I'll bring enough people to make sure that we can.
So.
My, my biggest concern is the, is obviously the outdoor, whether my outdoor device works, because that's how your, you know, kids that are outside the building, or anybody that's outside the building knows, they have to go. And then we'll.
Do you have to do a walk back?
That's a whole different animal.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you get them off a lot longer.
To our brain.
That's a whole different animal. No, I mean, as long as I have enough people to do the walk, I mean, I could always use somebody from the staff here to do the timing for me, and.
I would suspect they're all.
I think Kristen does her own timing anyway, so we can, we can make that work.
So two weeks, reasonable? My word in the bag.
I think some achievement.
Okay. Are you able to place that on the agenda for?
I can.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
That's the easiest part of it all.
So you guys are going to make a quick list, we noticed the following rooms. I believe there should be an existing punch list, because there was a bunch of.
I'm talking about the volume adjustments.
Yeah, I will do the best I can to, to get that answered, even if I got to walk around and speak to every single staff after the fire drill, I'll.
Is this going to be something that we should plan on doing every year, asking their?
No, no, I mean, it's a brand, we're commissioning a brand new system, it is an entirely new sound, obviously, and that needs to be taken into account, but, you know, when I have multiple kids telling me that, you know, hey, we couldn't hear the fire alarm, that, that to me adds a lot of legitimacy, legitimate.
Yes.
Makes me believe what they're saying.
My son doesn't hear a word I say until the night I stand up.
Yes, but this, this thing is telling him they get to go stand outside for ten minutes.
If I stand up, he hears everything.
The, and again, it's a completely different noise, and that's, that's the whole point, is that it's to allow for instructions to be given, and so that the, the fire alarm is not adding to the chaos, that's the whole point of the new sound. But again, we want to make sure that everybody knows there's a fire alarm going off, so.
Okay, so two weeks, hopefully, because I'm an optimist, we can wrap this up and come up with a final plan. Is that where we're all gathering?
So in two weeks, have you guys reviewed since the summer the plan for the water supply issue and access to it? The dry hydrant that was discussed with the payment project?
We have not, we have not gone in that yet.
Currently, parking space is also in lock access, if you review that.
Is there, Chris, are you aware of that?
Where of the request?
Of the parking spots that are blocking access to that area?
Yes, there's also a snowbank that I have to remove, so I just, yep, we can get that taken care of.
Well, like right now, there's fencing there, and that it's, the water supply's not established, so, right, has there been any, because this was brought up in the summertime, has there been any discussion?
There's not even a standpipe to tap water from.
There isn't in the rest of the town, so we use, you know, we, we have means to do that, I, I'm bringing it up because it came up when.
You're talking, just to get a fire truck down the park.
Correct. Yeah, and what was, one of the responses I got in email was, it was going to be something that would be worked on this summer, was, I thought, the plan, so have you guys talked in the engineers about putting in a dry hydrant or anything?
We have not started that process yet.
Okay. Is your plan to continue having parent pickup and drop off come around the back of the building for next year?
What else would you like in it?
I have no idea.
Would you like, I mean, I don't.
I have absolutely no idea what else you could do.
I don't know either. It's literally, yeah.
You know, for, let's say, an hour in the morning, hour in the afternoon, that access around the building is limited to the modulars. And I, I have no idea what else you could possibly do.
I know, I don't even know, I.
Put more kids on the bus.
Well, it seems reasonable, yeah, well, we have the buses now, right? It's just a matter of.
So let's.
That's a problem, right? If you have cars running between the modulars and the school, that's a safety issue. The fact that if that's our emergency access around the building, A, the pavement has to be wide, it's barely enough to fit a fire truck or to gain access to, right? This is a sprinkled building, so firepower and access is different than the non-sprinkled modular buildings.
Well, the good news is we don't pull cars up until two thirty, and we're done by two fifty, so it's really, just, I'm just throwing that out there, and same with the morning, they don't.
Just working across the street, seeing the backup of traffic.
Yep, oh, there's, I'm not saying there's not backup of traffic.
My wife does it two days a week, but I'm sure she's fun.
She doesn't have to deal with a ton of it, though, because, but that's, it is about twenty minutes from, from the time the first cars pull up till complete drop off is done in the morning, same in the afternoon.
Our concern with the way that the problem worked last year is we had, so when, during COVID, right, was when we started, well, you guys had no buses, right, so everybody was getting dropped off, and you were doing the two lane thing, and, and when we, when we approved the use of, well, sort of approved, when we didn't object to the use of the fire lane for that process, we were assured that if an emergency did arise, that lane would be cleared for us. So we had two incidences last year, we came here for medical emergencies, in one case, my day crew was delayed in accessing the building by traffic, in another, in another case, they were actually interrupted from patient care, sorry, two years ago now, because you guys were using the system, they're actually interrupted from patient care by a staff member, probably not authorized to do so, but interrupted from patient care by a staff member and asked to move the emergency vehicle out of the emergency lane to facilitate parent pickup. So that was kind of when we went to move away from allowing the two lane thing, because it just, it was, it had proven that was not going to work under, you know, no, no battle plan survives contact with the enemy, well, that's what happened, is when we actually had to get in. The fire lane, we couldn't, so that, that was the limit of our request, is that.
So I think last year.
The access being maintained.
On the building was to keep the.
I thought I would be George Jetson by now and be the one to fly and fly out.
Just put cars on the roof.
We're not, mhm.
No, not on the roof.
No roof.
Nothing on the roof. Is that what sole panels go?
Oh, that, you could put a parking garage on that roof, you wouldn't have a problem. That is a heavy duty roof.
So I'm going to be, because I'm an optimist, hopefully we can resolve that within two weeks, and sit both nine and one now. Does that work?
Thank you for your support.
All right. I guess I'm done. I'm going home.
We're only on item number four of seventy.
You can stay one day. Chris is lovely at chairs, this is, I'm getting it back.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for having me.
Tomorrow for the kid. You can have the surgery on that.
Okay.
Move the minutes of January third. It's the top of the pile, and what's in front of me? January third.
Okay, we have a second, we already have a second for Nate. Zach and Nate.
That's for January third.
January, January third, yeah. Any discussion about those minutes? Okay, all of David.
Uh, move the minutes of January seventeenth, uh, it's written.
Second.
And any discussion?
Yeah, I'm number D. Yeah, that would be, but, oh, yeah, I see that all the time, sorry, I say things backwards, too. Assignment of high school student policy, it says, if you go further down, so the students commit to three schools for one year, not all three, it should be all four. For all four, well, four years in high school.
But they don't have to commit for all four years.
No, no, but I'm, I'm just saying, they go to high school for four years, so it should be four.
That's the baby.
Well, yeah, that's true, too, but they're foregoing with how many years they're on a high school.
No, but, oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. Do you need a motion to amend that? Okay, all in favor of approving as amended?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Move the minutes of December sixth, and I apologize for being out of order, but it's from one of these faults, you printed them in.
I did, I gave them to you in the wrong order, it's true, it's true, I did.
Uh, do we.
I think this is where they're.
Yeah.
These were the minutes, the printed version was not finished.
I'm sorry, I gave you the second one, I didn't.
Yeah, sorry. Um, so they were unfinished, so these are the finished version, there didn't have any discussion. Okay, all in favor of approving December sixth?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, public comments.
Hi, Bobby Anne Dostie, Five Brown Road, and just to reiterate right what just happened, with all due respect, Zach, you knew about all of the punch list items since 2020, you were here, so you, so were you, Nate, so I really recommend that you guys, because two weeks, let's be realistic, that, your whole reasonable request thing, you should reasonably educate the rest of the board, because the likelihood of you finishing a punch list in two weeks is obviously not going to happen if you couldn't finish it since 2020. So you knew what the fire department was requesting from 2020, and then they seemed really knowledgeable, the engineers seemed really knowledgeable, but it seems like nobody was educating and giving the information to the fire department for them to sign off, and like Nate said, do you even have a sign off? Did they even say, this looks good? He didn't seem like he received the second copy, so I really recommend you educating everybody, because.
Can you direct your comments to the chair?
Sure, sure.
That's just the policy.
Yeah, definitely, I recommend you educating yourself and getting every information you can out of the people who have been here, because nothing seems to have been done in a long time, except when something hits the fan and needs to be done. So hopefully that will happen, because you guys seem really dedicated to being in your roles, but thank you so much, and have a great night.
Kimberly Black Meeting House Hill, I just had two quick comments, I definitely am in support of making sure that we have the safest school for our staff, students, and the community, and the understanding that that is another burden on what our taxes would look, potentially look like, I would be in favor of trying to re-phase and extend this process to make sure that we have the best detection for a smoke detector in these rooms, because things like the Christmas lights and such that they had mentioned, and even other such things like outlets burning, like those catching on fire, like they're going to produce smoke before they're going to produce heat, and I really think that's a really important component of keeping our schools safe for everybody and intact, because like, ultimately it's going to be cheaper to install those detectors than it will be to replace the school, to push school out so that we can make improvements once a wall catches on fire, like, we just, the community can't do that, so I think it's really important to work towards making sure we get those comments addressed. And just a small backup to classroom sizes, again, I would, I have a hard time with, like, the kindergarten classrooms not being required, and we'd kind of like to have a consideration for, depending on class sizes, I realize you don't understand those, but to commence those back into the two classrooms, but potentially keep staff, like, keep the four teachers, because it's not essentially class size as much as it is like student to teacher ratio, so if you have twenty students and two teachers, and in there, you could separate the kids out, you can work in groups, and I think that would be an option to consider to at least, if there's four kindergarten classrooms, if we can get two of those classrooms back, we could reduce down the modular, for example, and get those classrooms back, so if that's something that would be attainable, I'd kind of like to thought about. Thank you.
Hill Rhodes, Tripp Street, Madam Chairman, it does seem like you have a process, control, and communication issue you were discussing earlier this evening, so good luck with that. Speaking of communication, a week till the deadline for the Gazette, do you have any good news, dicey news, information, deadlines, that you'd like to get into every mailbox in town, please let me know, I'll have to do it. Thank you.
Lynn McNair Perry, Ring Road, Madam Chairman.
You don't have to.
I would like to commend Zach for trying to be as apolitical or whatever, to trying to tiptoe around and get to the point, I appreciated that, I would have not been as judicious, I guess I have to say, but I'm an engineer and it's black and white. What I am most concerned about is that Assistant Fire Chief Zach here with the book in front of him and said that your building didn't meet that code. The problem is that code addresses existing buildings, what he should have said clearly is this building does not meet new construction standards, the code has existing building standards as well, if we're not meeting existing building standards, and he sat there, and that's what he actually meant to say, then there's a problem with our fire department not doing their job, because we are supposed to be meeting the existing building standards, but I, I feel like it was put out there, people will watch this and think, when he says your building doesn't meet code, it doesn't meet new construction code, but neither there's any house, other than if you had your house built within the last year and a half, does it meet code? So you, codes change, but they have provisions for existing, and I just want to make that as clear as I can within the people watching the meeting, but that book has entire chapters on existing buildings, and I believe that every effort was made by those people to meet that standard. I don't think there's one engineer out there that would go out of their way to not meet that standard. Just want you to feel a little bit easier about that.
Thank you.
Ms. Dose, did you catch that?
Yeah, I caught it when he was saying it, I'm saying she should still educate herself because the likelihood of it being in two weeks is. You know.
Any other public comments? Okay.
Can I, can I just say something for the record?
Sure.
Mostly, we have been working on resolving this for months. And for this meeting to occur tonight took a number of outside factors to make it happen, but this is not something we have not been making attempts to resolve for months. And I think any sentiment outside of that is a misrepresentation of the truth. This is not something that we have ignored, this is something we have been attempting to resolve for months. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's in September.
It's in September.
Okay, I'll move on to agenda review, um, do we have any, do we need another couple?
I don't think so, but you need to add something.
Okay.
We have to revote on the tax impact on our, right? Change that. So we will have that as letter D, if it were immediate, is it?
Is there inflation, uh, inflation?
Sure, wow.
Is it, just one other potential question, because Chris is here.
Yeah.
And I believe he's here to discuss item eleven A, would it be possible to allow Chris to speak to that and have that conversation, so if maybe he can go home?
We absolutely can.
Unless you want to stay all night, but that's a project.
No, 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 that'll happen, so we'll, we'll, year eleven A now.
I did not make copies of these.
No, that's fine, they were many, many pages.
I know that somebody got a binder.
Somebody got a special binder.
Hopefully, hopefully, because I gave it to my son to deliver.
There is a hell of a lottery.
I know. Made by the superintendent.
Yes, color, coffee, and everything.
I even knew some of the words.
They're delivered by my side to my house.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, Chris.
Hi, good evening. We've got three bids, a lot of questions to them, some aren't as clear, crystal clear as others. A lot or all of the proposals have an award date by the end of this month. I would like to request to do the following things. Reach out to my vendor for the roof, to get his opinion on the racking system and mounting system for the roof. To reach out to Clean Energy New Hampshire, to get there, which is a nonprofit organization, to get their, in, their input on the, um, equipment that each vendor is proposing, and then I've spoken with Zach to get together with the three vendors for a quick meeting, just to go over their proposals, if we have any questions. They can get answered, because this is a big project to miss something on that, you know, could tip the scale one way or another, sort of like-
I was just wondering, anything, okay, if I can really tell you more about everything being in here? They were looking, you saying, "I'm going real soon."
I am.
If that could be included in my question.
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm hoping to schedule these quickly to get the information wrapped up by mid-next week to make my final proposal the following Thursday. So, um, I'll start emailing everybody times and dates, and I'll get that arranged early next week.
And I think ultimately what would be occurring would be that Chris would be making a recommendation, and then you would be presumably notifying the prospective winner, pending the outcome of-
Voting.
Voting, the PPA question and all that stuff, but at least you can then let two other contractors know that they're, they're out.
Um, and I think Chris already knows this, but we just need to be careful not to disclose when we're asking for advice from people, they can't know the companies who submitted it.
All of the information were direct cut sheets from the manufacturer, so they have no idea-
Who submitted it.
What, right, what vendor's submitting, what, what proposal.
The big picture is, is it's a, it's a, it's a 300 plus or minus kilowatt system, roof mounted along the lines of what we discussed, and there's some variations in the proposals that, um, I think just need to be rooted out a little bit to see what seems the most appropriate.
It's not heavy, no one's going to be able to change your number or anything like that, we've got to hold everybody to what they're doing, but I just want to make sure that eyes are dotted and teeth are crushed before I make my proposal.
I think that sounds great. I know we also have the energy committee in town, and I wonder if it would be worth consulting with the energy committee on this. I don't know if there's a meeting-
I don't think we can, those are really controversial, and I don't think we can disclose the company's, um, what their bids were.
All right, you bring it up.
Very good, thank you.
So we will go back to item number eight, review correspondence. Um, I didn't have any in here, and I also didn't have any in the drive, um, but I admittedly didn't go back and check, but I think most of the, there were questions and comments, but I generously believe it's very specific, not like the whole board. I've gotten a lot of emails. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if there were any more comments. Okay. If there were- I didn't go back and look either, though. Yeah, if there were, I will look again. Consent agenda.
Give it to you.
Excellent. Okay, board reports. Do you want to do PTO?
Yeah, it's, there isn't much. Okay, um, just, there is a, we're planning to do a Small and Tall Ball, um, April 12th. I think it was fourth grade and below with some sort of an adult that they would like to bring.
I think it was pre-K to two.
Or maybe it was K to two.
Pre-K.
Yeah. Um, and then Cookies and Craft Night, um, March 8th, which was a hit last year, so, all right.
Exact Board, we did have a meeting.
I think you-
I don't think so, it's the fifth.
Ten. Can't read it yet. There's one next week.
There's one next week, um, and everyone should have gotten it. Because they're, the auditors are coming and giving a sort of update and breakdown of people are-
It's not an update, though.
Oh, okay. Uh, yeah.
Geez!
The board, uh-
Sting bug in my hair.
They're everywhere, sorry.
So annoying.
Remember my house, too. It's fine.
The exec board have asked for, um, the audit, the auditing from someone represented to come and just share with them, why would we do audits, what are they for, how are they done, what's the timeline? What is, yeah, like, sort of breaking down what it is, what-
Help the layperson understand.
Yeah.
Because when you learn something like this, and you're like, what is this, what do I do with this?
So, if you're interested in learning more. Valentine's Day, no more romantic way to spend the night than learning about audits.
Perfect time.
I'll be there anyway, because I assume it's a regular exec board meeting. Um, okay, I think that's it for you. Yeah, no, I know. Yeah, it's like, what, kind of sort of a meeting. Um, all right, simple reports.
Yeah. So this is, covers January 3rd through February 7th. I'd like to start off with the basketball season, I'll turn it over to our esteemed athletic director.
Yes, I don't know if there's a coincidence of a new athletic director and all our teams beating the finals, but-
Definitely.
There possibly could be. So, um, it is awesome to report that, um, all four teams, both A and B girls and A and B boys are in the finals tomorrow. So, um, B finals are here at DCS, and A are at Barrington, um, and they typically hold those, no coincidence either, but they typically hold the playoffs at R2 schools because of the regulation courts. Quite a few other schools in our, um, in our league do not have regulation-sized courts, so it makes it difficult to have kids adjust and things of that nature, so. So those will be held at 3:45 and 5-ish respectively, so, which is great.
Awesome.
Yep.
Thanks to our PTO who provided, um, the, uh, materials for Appreciated Dragon Day. We celebrated that last year for the first time. It is a National Appreciated Dragon Day, I know it's hard to believe that we would actually have that with our mascot. So it was on Tuesday, typically, I think, I think the actual day is like the 15th, but with Martin Luther King and ha-ha. So Tuesday the 16th, we had Appreciated Dragon Day, and when you walk around the school, you'll see Appreciate a Dragon colorings and drawings all over the place with who our students and staff appreciate. Um, on Wednesday the 17th, we had SAU Leadership, that's, um, was over at the conference room at the SAU building. In addition, Concord High School visited our eighth graders to talk about, um, um, registration. We had a visit from Cobrown back in December, I think, and Concord High School came, uh, in, um, on Wednesday the 17th, and we had a parent meeting that evening, uh, we were supposed to have it the night before, but we had a snow day, so got, uh, rescheduled to that evening. Um, on Monday the 22nd, um, we had our professional day, and it has been a tradition for the last few years to have, uh, something called Tech Trek. So, um, Brooke Ann Petroselli had done a survey, um, several, a couple of years ago, asking teachers, like, what, what kinds of things do you need, what are you interested, what can I do to help you, and, um, predominantly the teachers replied, "We'd love to have time to just dig into the technology that we have available to us at DCS." Um, and so, uh, that was when Tech Trek was born, and, um, Brooke, Brooke Ann Petroselli and Beth Moschio did an awesome presentation on AI, and, um, some of the millions and millions of resources that are out there, there weren't millions, but they, yeah, and Brooke Ann talked about the direction that AI is going, where we are in the district, the district has started an AI committee, district-wide, to start taking a look at policies, and, um, so this is moving forward, um, and carefully, because there's a lot of security around AI that we have to be aware of, and there's a lot of educating of students that we would need to do, um, for understanding of what AI is. Beth, our, our media, um, our media, our librarian, um, did a presentation on media literacy, and that's the work that she's doing with sixth and seventh grade, including fifth grade, on citing sources and, um, and all the work that is going on around that. Uh, so that was a wonderful morning, and then in the afternoon, uh, teams had time to dig into the resources that Brooke had provided, Brooke and Beth had provided, um, it was a wonderful day. The morning started out with our PTO and families. PTO came to set up, um, a delicious spread of bagels and muffins and cream cheeses and, all the things that, uh, teachers love, so appreciate you, uh, doing that for us. And, um, on Friday the 26th, we had our monthly all-school meeting, our fourth graders were the hosts. We finished our eye-ready, uh, winter eye-ready benchmarking, um, for our K, oh, sorry, first through eighth grade, um, our kindergartners did not do, um, eye-ready yet, and, um, most schools in the district are not doing kindergarten until the spring, so we'll do a benchmark in the spring with our kindergartners. And we spent, um, a good amount of time in our PLCs this week, going over that data, reviewing it, uh, celebrating, um, some of the growth that we've seen, talking about what, uh, we need to do in terms of, uh, addressing some of the gaps that we are seeing happening, um, just using the data to drive our instruction, as well as our wind blocks for students for what I need. Administration has enjoyed our time with Classes of the Week this month. Mrs. Plater in kindergarten was Class of the Week, Mrs. Maynard was Class of the Week, and Mrs. Omarah is Class of the Week this week, she's in second grade, Mrs. Maynard's kindergarten. And as you know, I've been, uh, visiting advisories in their community circle, and, um, I was able to visit Mrs. Blonde and then Mrs. Chase, the art teacher, they have a, an advisory together in seventh grade, and I visited Mrs. Peaslee's advisory, uh, the other day, sixth grade, and I'll be visiting Ms. Morris tomorrow, and she has a sixth-grade advisory. I did confirm that, uh, with Bob Malloy for Saturday, he's coming for the delivery session, knows he's sitting up in the cafeteria, and I will be here at seven o'clock for, um, uh, his arrival and setup. Um, just a, just an FYI, some upcoming things, tomorrow we're doing our Career Fair, this has also been a tradition here at DCS for many years, where magnet, eighth-grade magnets visit with, um, members of the community who come in and talk about their careers. On Friday, the Deerfield Fire and Police, uh, will be visiting first grade for their community unit. Uh, we will also be having the 100th Day of School, which I think is Monday, Monday the 12th, because Valentine's Day is November 14th, in case you weren't sure, when that, when that fell this year. Um, and just a, another thing upcoming, uh, for, for the board's information, New Hampshire State Assessment Test, the New Hampshire SAS, has, uh, is doing a, a writing test, though they always do a writing test, um, but this year they're, um, having us, uh, give it to the students in March. Um, the, there's been a lot of feedback and a lot of, uh, groups that have gotten together over the course of the year to talk about this, the writing test and how to improve it, uh, so we are moving it up to between March 5th and 7th, the day, the window is bigger than that, but here at DCS we'll be doing it March 5th, um, and March 7th, the students will be given a writing prompt, um, either in information, um, uh, opinion, opinion or narrative. The narrative samples will be hand-scored, uh, and calibrated, um, so that we have a, different calibration moving forward, they provide, the state has provided rubrics for us to use, um, and the T, and the grade levels, this is for grades three through eight, uh, have been working with their students on, you know, focusing on those three types of writing, because it's happening earlier than it typically does. Typically, we would, uh, start the SAS test the end of April and into May, um, so that will be happening, and it's just the writing test, and it's just for this year, so we're told. Um, and then lastly, uh, Mr. Grieve has sent out an, uh, email on behalf of Mr. McCabe, you want to talk about that?
Uh, yeah, sure. So, Mr. McCabe, as you guys are aware, is our world cultures teacher, um, kind of a new adventure scenario for DCS, um, outside of the World Language Program that we used to have, and, uh, seventh grade this year has been studying, um, more popular religions, not every religion, religion, obviously, but, um, he was able to do, get a guest, uh, speaker who was a rabbi, uh, out of, uh, Manchester. So, we will be having, um, that, uh, rabbi come next week, speak to all the seventh-grade students, um, share her perspective on her religion, kids can ask questions and things of that nature. So, um, he's getting jumped in the deep end real quick, and it's impressive what he's doing, so.
An email has gone out to the seventh grade families, letting them know about this, and, um, letting them know that they can reach out to Mr. McCabe if they have any questions or concerns.
Great.
And that's, yeah.
Is it, is he working, that's a great idea, is he working on addressing other religions as well?
He is trying, yes, yeah, so.
Cool, thank you so much. Curriculum Review Board, um, I already reported on the last time meeting, but I just want to remind you that the art staff is going to present their new curriculum on March 3rd, that's in the minutes, but I just want to bring it up, and, um, I have done my next meeting. MBC updates, I don't think there have been any since our last, um, border board out that are different, um, so, but you're just moving forward on Saturday, so, we will see everyone then. Okay, now, media business, uh, B lunch prices.
So, um, Gail had reached out a, a bit ago and asked if we would have to start having a conversation about increasing lunch prices, and I neglected to write down what she was, she gave you a price and we wanted to have a conversation.
Well, um, I, so currently we charge $2.60, and we've charged that for a couple, well, for years, outside of the time that students were getting free lunch and, uh, during COVID. Uh, so we've been charging $2.60 for years. You, uh, had mentioned that Amber said we can only increase prices a certain percentage, and looking around the district, it, the average around the district is $2.85, so I think it was 25 cents more than what we had, and I think a couple, maybe-
I, I think that the regulation is 10%, but I asked Amber to check on that for me, and I think you can, at one time, exceed 10% of what you're charging, which-
Is about 20.
6 cents.
Right. So if that's the case, then we will be looking to increase the price to $2.85.
Would that be something you're looking to do for next school year?
Yes, next year, yeah. It's getting harder and harder to make a lunch for $2.60.
Yeah, the same, is that just because of, um, our inability to sort of make the food that goes on to the table?
I went on it and ran out of surplus quickly, um, we had the surplus because we had free lunches for a while, so we were able to build up, but-
Right, so the question is, is raising it to $2.85 impact anybody's ability necessarily to buy-
To pay.
To pay a set of lunches. And that ties into, to some other policies that I think we want to go move this.
We just reviewed the school, um, the negative account balance policy, yeah.
So, is this something you're looking to address tonight?
Like, the decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but we wanted to put it out there for you to at least think about if that was a proposal, um, you want to think about it and come back to us, maybe, that's fine. We just wanted the families to know this, we don't want to-
Right, it would be-
Make, have any surprises for next year, yeah.
That's number three of your stories?
I don't know what your percentage is now.
Yeah, so I can, I'll find out for you.
The experience receiving that, I mean, the, the free and reduced lunch rate is higher than what we charge regularly, we get reimbursed more for a free and reduced lunch than we charge for a lunch, right? When we get $3.50, I think, or something like that.
I'd have to talk to the person that does food service.
I'll make a motion to see if it applies, if we increase the lunch price for next school year to $2.85.
Discussion.
I'd like to wait and think about it a little bit. Yeah, I, I, there was, um, the, the School Board Association, I've signed up for a thing about lunch in the past, and, um, I tried to listen to it and I couldn't, it was like all messed up, but they sent me the video, and I haven't had a chance to watch it, and I'd like to watch that one before. May not make any difference in what I decide, but I guess I'd like to give it to my-
I think there's a, uh, there's, there's historically always a deficit of food services-
Right, yeah.
And this 25 cents a meal is going to have a huge impact, I don't know if that helps to close a deficit.
I agree, and I think I'll probably vote that way, I guess I'd just like a little more.
Yeah, I guess I'd like a little more time and- Yeah, I guess I would like a little more time and I would like the opportunity to get feedback if people have very strong feelings about it. It's just not a topic that I've thought that much about, nor have I talked to people about it. So, I mean, I think we should, I personally think we should sort of table the issue until maybe March, our next business meeting, to give people time to think about it and weigh in, you know, if it is going to positively, you know, really substantially affect people.
Sorry, just to give you, that would be $44.50 more a year if a student was to eat lunch every day.
But then a lot of parents have more than they would like to.
Right, yes, that would be per student. Yeah, and that's if, yeah, with 178 school days.
Is there a way that we can also find out, like an average that we run, like?
Food deficit?
Yeah, how much?
It fluctuates from year to year and because, it is, but because the state was fully reimbursing for a number of years, we've lost, we don't have accurate data for the last couple of years because the state was fully reimbursing. We're actually running a financially sound food service budget.
I think it's, I think it's.
For the first time ever.
I think it's more her noticing that now, kind of back in full operation and trying to order food and order everything she came forward to say.
So I mean, if you think about, if you think about, if every single child, and so we have, you know, 500 kids, every single child bought lunch every single day, we're still only talking $21,000, $22,000 of gains. And the percentage of kids that are, they eat lunch is minimal. It doesn't necessarily close a gap in food services, but, you know, it's one of those things, I made the motion because it's sometimes an unpopular motion and needs to be made, but still needs to be done.
Yeah. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it and. And I, you know. And I don't, I obviously don't want to put more work, but if there was like an example of like, if we could raise it, like maybe we could offer this or something that may help or explain why we are.
Chinese food?
I don't know. We're trying to pay for what we're already offering.
The cost of food goes up.
Yeah.
You know, perpetually.
But that's fine.
And staffing costs go up, so I mean, it's just.
I'm thinking too, one of our goals this year is looking at food and trying to make sure it's healthy food and looking at all that. So I just feel like I'd like to do that and then, you know, so that they're in parallel and not do one and then do the other later.
This is not specifically related to lunch prices, but there is, I was watching an education video here and there is pending legislation about increasing access to local foods and I think there were, there was some sort of grant program that they were coming to get passed. So anyway, that would be interesting to look at, see where that.
I was looking through, then I could see that.
I didn't know if there was one in there yet. So anyway, we have a pending motion on the table to increase lunch price to $2.85. All in favor? Okay, all opposed?
I'm not opposed to that.
Right.
Today.
Are you, did you say hi?
I meant no.
That's right. I was the one who catch that.
I didn't say it at the same time as Zach.
Yes.
All opposed, hi. I am opposed.
Four one.
I wrote a line.
For now.
For now, yeah.
And I'll try to get some of that information.
Okay. C, amendment on school building repair fund. Before we move on to this, can I skip back 25 steps and ask to add another agenda that I forgot about? I promised I would not forget this and I did, a conversation about electric buses. We, yeah, may have your seats, I'll leave it there.
I can't wait.
Okay, so we heard from one of our trustees of the trust funds and when we took the vote for to withdraw funds from the building repair fund, we did not cite the exact name of the fund in the motion. So they asked that we vote so that we, the record and the minutes reflect the name, the exact name of the trust fund. So, yeah, I don't have any votes in front of you. So you're, I don't know, Trish, you probably don't even have it in front of you. And the withdrawal was for $851,186.56. And in the paper, we had school facilities repair and improvement and we, this was supposed to be addressed a while ago. The improvement, when we added, changed the name, it didn't pass. So we shouldn't have said improvement. We should have just said school building repair fund. And that request was to have the correct name, so.
So you need a motion to withdraw.
With the correct name of trust.
Eight hundred and, what was the number, 851,000?
186.56.
So motion, three move, 851,186.
And 56 cents.
And 56 cents from naming which one?
School building repair.
School building repair.
School building repair fund. That's my motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will resubmit the request with the correct name. Tax impact note. I amended out a revised warrant. And first, would like to say that I'm aware that there were some energetic conversations about the warrant article in Deerfield and wanted to make it crystal clear that the board received a warrant that did not have final edits. Not the board's fault. It was put in front of you, you signed and you graciously signed it. It had the feedback from the attorney on it, but it did not have the final edits on it. So that version should not have been posted. It was posted. I am hopeful that the edits were corrected and caught and we did check with legal to make sure that the board had the authority to fix and make edits to a warrant article and we do, so hopefully this is a clean-up copy in front of you. But the one thing that we actually, Eric Bros noticed that the tax impact was wrong on a couple of them and hadn't been updated from current votes also. So the advice from legal was for the, that that's something the board decides to put on the warrant. So the board should vote to adjust and add the tax impact to the warrant articles. And I did make a note of what the changes were so that you knew. Number one, originally, the increase was 1948 for an overall increase of 220. That went up two cents on each. So I think one of us changed the tax.
Two cents.
Twenty cents, sorry. It's 1958 and then $2.30 now. So, and then number two, the original version had 18 cents and that is now 12 cents. And on number seven, the original didn't have the tax impact, so that it's on there because that's in the board. He decided they wanted to include this tax impact and that's 18 cents.
So we need to move these into the door or are we pre-very, we need to move it?
Motion to accept the revised warrant.
I made a motion to revise the, except one, revise the amended one. Accept revised.
Yeah, we got it.
Accept the revised.
Accept revised one.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah. When that change was made, was voted on, do we accept the new budget from the MBC with the bus? Like, I would not have that being exact if there's.
Oh, we have too many approvals.
And actually, because I don't know if the votes would be the same, because are you amending the votes at this point?
We haven't touched anything other than the tax impacts.
Okay, so we're not changing the votes as far as the counts. We're just accepting the amended one.
Correct. And there was like a few grammatical things that were.
Right, I just want to make sure I look like it's not going to be a five zero on the budget.
No.
Okay.
But you're right, it probably, I think it was three one zero. Not four one zero, because you were not here. We'll have to just.
On the MBC number?
No, 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 the school board recommendation.
When it, when it was, I mean, I meant when it was changed from the MBC, I knew that.
Nate was up here. Right, I'll make sure those are correct. I will look back to that.
So the only other option is, do you want to just, where the five members are here, is it better to?
No.
No.
You don't want to do that.
I'm sure you did.
I always kick the can first.
I really do.
Is the motion pending?
Yeah, did you get a second? You seconded.
I seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the amended warrants?
Aye.
Aye. Which does not include the amendment that will be making. Absolutely. It's just edited and the tax impacts are updated. That's it.
I'm not changing vote or anything, but does that mean when Nate does the tariff contract that he has to amend it?
No, no, if the votes are incorrect, if they're not on here, that's an edit and we will fix that.
No, no, I meant the amount, because you said it went from 18 cents to 12 per thousand.
The tax.
Yes, maybe tax and that.
Just the tax and that.
Right.
But no, that doesn't, you, you vote on that and that's it.
Okay.
That's informational.
So what you have to amend on the one is something else, yes?
Yes.
We're going to talk about that.
Okay, right. Are we grabbing on that? Do you want to tell the board what your plans were?
I would, I'd kind of want to surprise.
I mean, if you're going to make an amendment, you probably want to tell your board.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Made a handout.
That was a long amendment.
No, no, it's, it's the same. It's one thing. So this is a document that we prepared to clear up the language in Article Six because there was a lot of feedback, a lot of which I agree with, that amendments are, the Article Six was very unclear about what we were trying to do. I think the board in discussing it has been quite clear, but the word itself was slightly confusing. So I proposed the amendments as seen here in the middle and we run those by council and they signed off and said, looks good.
Did they sign off on the first version too?
Yes.
Then they wrote.
They wrote, they wrote it, but when we, Kendra had me ask if her clarifying and change in that language was okay.
Yes, you just, you just put everything.
I really just moved one clause up higher.
It does make more sense that way.
So that it makes more sense.
If it's clear right at the start, whatever it is that we want to do, instead of trying to find it down there in the middle.
Right, it was confusing people. So we have the original, just so people can compare, we have the original language. In the middle is our redlined amendment that we're going to be making. And then the final is the full amended article with no redlining. Just so people can understand when a lot of words are being said at the.
They'll have a printed copy.
It's important.
We will have a printed copy at the O'Grave.
And it's important to have that separated from that because sometimes people don't even read through the whole thing. So it's really good to have a ready print so people can just what it is you're talking about.
I thought it made much more sense.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You should be a lawyer.
I should be a lawyer. Who knew? Okay. So that's that.
Good catch.
Electric buses. There's been a lot of conversation with the SAU about our buses and, you know, maybe we need to look at our own buses. Somebody had thrown something out about electric buses and it didn't really get any traction. And then Amy Manzelli, several months ago, on the Pemberg School Board, came back to the board and said, hey, I've heard that there's a really big pot of grant money through EPA for schools that want to adopt electric buses. The board authorized her to look into that. So she's been doing that. She's been working with a company in Connecticut who sort of facilitates and helps you with the process.
I looked into it, but the SAU told me to go beyond that.
Well, I'm only bringing you the Pemberg Board's opinion here at this point. So she just found out that the intent to apply expires next week and I told her there was no way we were going to pull off a full SAU board meeting when it's difficult to get one of those together, even to approve a budget. It's 12 people, trying to get 12 people together in the next few days. But luckily, I had this meeting tonight and Jack is meeting with Allenston and Epsom on Monday and Tuesday. So we actually could submit an intent. What she, she would need to be authorized by each board that wanted to submit something. It's not the grant, it's not a commitment. It's just a, hey, it's kind of like the building aid, hey, we might be looking into this to tell us how much we would qualify for and to meet the deadline. If we don't do it now, the net, the third pot of money is going to have less and they don't have much less. But she said this pot of money right now is pretty significant and could, just from, we can't, you know, hold them to it, but very preliminary numbers, we could potentially get $200,000 towards each bus and maybe the cost would be $35,000. The piece that is going to take some time is we need to develop a committee, obviously, look into the charging, look, you know, answer all these questions. It would mean hiring a lot of drivers. So this is a lot of conversation. This is not, this is very preliminary, but if we don't at least put our name in, that, hey, we want to be in this pot, then we can't, we have to wait.
So in an effort, because I love bussing.
I mean, you would.
I just, I love bussing. I think it's great there and it's worth exploring and I think it's just a matter of a motion to authorize.
Yeah, Amy has to, it says, I've been authorized by to submit this and she would need, any board that wants to participate in this round of funding would need to vote to authorize her to.
So moved.
Absolutely. This could save us a ton of money.
Imagine if you had a 300 kilowatt solar.
That's right. Add a charging station.
Couple of plugs, you're off the mountain.
Yeah, I'm on board too.
Are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
Okay, and to, let's clarify for sure.
Clarify the motion.
To authorize Amy Manzelli of the Pemberg School Board to submit a letter of intent for the Deerfield School Board.
First, you didn't hear me say all that?
For how many buses? Oh, what? How many buses you want her to say, hey, we would want this many buses if we got this grant.
Potentially ten.
Ten.
Potentially ten.
You can, you can always say, if this went all the way, you'd say no thanks, but you want to get in your.
This is just a, this is just a handshake, you know, how do you do in a first aid.
Okay.
What is?
I mean, is there any benefit to putting less buses? Well, I think if, you're going to, I don't think so. It seems like if you put in your, like if the SAU put in for 50 buses, they may say you can get $200,000 per bus, is what I understand was. Or, you know, when it comes down to, we get to, oh, we only need 40, 49. Okay, so you're including in your motion 10 buses?
That's what I said.
Very clearly. And you're seconding all of them?
I'm seconding all of that.
Oh, we are on the same page, right here. You're not going to, I am not riding alone right now. I just got one co-conspirator on the side.
Okay, all in favor of designating Amy to do this, not repeat the whole thing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I will let her know. Policies. There's an entire second agenda page. So we have been diligently working, actually created a wonderful master spreadsheet that we have all the policies for all the districts and color coded them and these are the ones that are required by law that have been updated that you need to update and then I sorted them by date and we're trying to. And we're trying to plug away at addressing the really old ones that sit there and don't get dealt with because they're not required, so nobody looks at them ever. Um, and I think we're through, working on the nineteen nineties at this point. Um, so we've tried to sort of separate out into sections so that you understood sort of what we're doing. Um, so the top section says first reading required, updates needed. So these are policies required by law that the School Board Association has updated since you've adopted them. So you have them, but you've not updated them at the rate that the School Board Association has. So those, those will be, need to be looked at. There's also a first reading for um policies that we wanted on the agenda to address, so the high school reassignment policy that you're working on. Um, the fund balance policy is something the auditors want us to update. Um, and then the part-time substitute staff is something we talked about at the executive board level, so definitely those are there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Because I was a little confused by like the fund balance one, if you have the Deerfield one and you have the School Board Association. So we're supposed to compare the two and decide.
So typically, unless you see something in the old policy that you're really interested in putting in the school board policy, typically boards use the sample policy because they know that after every legislative session, those get updated. And if you want to change it, I just need to reach out to um legal and say, hey, if you want to modify this and still meet the requirements of a law. That's all.
All right.
Um, and then we're just starting to plug away, so there's six on the bottom that are from the nineteen nineties and um.
And these are not required?
If, if, they shouldn't, you can just use something to speak in the categorization. Um, but you should be able to see whether or not there's a School Board Association corresponding policy. And if there isn't, that means that it doesn't exist any longer. So there's some really old policies that boards have that they don't even exist in the policy manual anymore, and you would just be voting to rescind those.
Scared.
Oh, no.
Don't be afraid.
My view is.
It's liberating.
We're getting rid of them unless we need them.
Yeah, they're, well, they don't exist anymore, you know, you may have had a policy for something that used to be a part of the policy manual and it just doesn't exist anymore, it doesn't mean we don't address it, it doesn't mean we don't have procedures in place, but it's no longer a school board policy.
Yeah, and I like, for instance, um, the last one on here is um apparently not inappropriate policy based on what I was. J I C D dash R.
Okay.
Student suspension and expulsion.
Yeah.
So like, we can't really make the policy about that, but we can make some like guidelines.
There are, well, there are, there's other, sometimes there are other policies that address this and it's changed over time. So there are, um, the discipline rules were being overhauled in the last few years, so that, that's a separate policy.
Yes.
So you need, and you don't need that.
I was like, why do we not need a student suspension policy? But it's like, it explains that in the um school board document that's going to arrive, like, if you read the first paragraph, it's like that, these are sort of guidelines, but not a policy that sort of explain a different policy. So like, if an administrator needs help figuring out how to enforce policy J I C D, they can reference this document, but it's not actually a policy per se. So.
So maybe not.
That's.
Well, I think it's a good guideline.
Just because of the nineteen nineties.
Yeah, exactly, it was in the nineties.
I'd rather remove it.
That's right.
Yeah, so in order for something to be removed, we have to remove it.
Okay.
Um, so that's sort of why there's so many. Um, and they don't all need to be done at once, but we are pretty committed to getting, having a page of policies for everybody. Because we've got to start plugging away, getting these manuals updated.
And like, so if you're looking at the agenda, for instance, like I M D A, that is an optional policy because it's already a state law. Like, there's not, we can't really change that, but we don't need to have a specific policy on it. If that makes sense.
Yeah, there's some of the older policies, where there's gonna be options and they aren't.
Right, like, laws have been changed, so it's not optional.
Yeah, so what would be the best way for us to tackle it? Should we start with the first reading nineteen nineties and get those done, or?
I would, I would think it's probably easiest to rescind some of the nineteen nineties. Um, and then I would focus also on the middle section that we really want to work on. Um.
The middle section.
The first readings that you're currently, yeah, the three, the very first folder, okay, first reading, yeah.
So are these all, I don't know, they go to second reading, next one, and then third, and then into, you mean they can be hit with all of them?
They, they can all move to second reading, but you, you know, you can decide, like in Pemberg, they decided, okay, we're gonna do this section, this section, and then a few at the top at the next meeting. They would, they decided what they were gonna work on, so it's not so overwhelming. At least they stay on here and we're.
And this is not, this is not the two.
No, no, I don't lose.
We haven't gone to the two thousands yet.
Um, so for next, I mean, your meeting, you meet every two weeks, so that's a lot of pressure. So if you wanted to just deal with the nineteen nineties and then your um, the middle three that we're currently working on, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
First meeting, we can leave the others on the first reading. Does that work for everyone? Move the second to categories of second readings?
Yeah, I'm, so, I mean, the first one, I only see two policies.
For first reading?
In the first.
It should be the high school assignment one that you're working on.
Okay.
D I A and G C two.
That's interesting, I don't have the high school one in there, not folder.
Maybe she, so maybe she didn't.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was just the two. Could we then, she had it, it probably would take sure that she even runs second reading, that's why we have to wait for the end to.
All right, so that, and then looking at the middle first reads, the nineteen nineties, okay. Are you, are you with the first ones?
Yeah.
I started the reading.
And then we'll hold the um required updates for the following. As you have more time. Because, yeah, well, I would recommend looking at the old policy and reading the new wording.
And then see if there's something missing.
Right, okay, if there's something.
That's what I needed, I needed direction, because I started looking, I'm going.
It's very confusing.
I have the same, like, what are we doing here?
I would say, read the new School Board Association policy and see if there's anything from the old policy you want to add.
Right, okay.
I would say, probably aren't believing things from the School Board Association policies, but if there's something specific you want to add, that's something we need to consider.
Okay. And then the, the reading of the nineteen nineties, a lot of it might just be things that we decide we don't want to.
Yeah, I mean, they're not required, they're optional, um.
And typically there is rest in two phases, or they've become law that you have to follow.
Or they're just obsolete.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, Clint. Now, yeah, well. Oh, the informational item, eh? Oh, yes. It's in the back of the last page.
I was, um, we had another version of a trend information, I was talking about the entryway. Um, but just discussing my was, um, looking and I, I missed before I looked at the topic and realized you were talking to the NBC. Um, I'm presenting it, uh, on Saturday, I'm asking that I can present this, provide it to the, to people coming in. So basically, um, I would probably wrote a couple copies off and just have them sitting at the entryway, I don't know if they have to project anything or whether the.
We are projecting things.
Are you think?
Why?
You've got something to project?
If, if I can get my stuff together.
So do you need the TV?
That would be helpful, we can get.
TV.
The touchscreen, should be on wheels, we can wheel it in.
We'll be in the cafeteria and off the gym.
Yeah.
The giant one.
No, 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 no.
On a cart.
We didn't keep them on the stage.
Oh, put the laptop over there, I'm looking at it.
You put them on the stage and we're talking.
All right.
Um, and I, even with that, there had been requests for documents in the past, people can't, just can't see that, um, from the conference room. So I would throw enough of the whole this copy. But basically, I just took some, what I could find from the V O E page and I just, there's a lot of, you can get lost in, in salary schedules. And so I tried to summarize and just kind of put some key, um, and I tried to be somewhat random, sort of in our, in our geographic neighborhood. Districts I, I hope from, and we had contracts that went, we have, I put fine fragment all this stuff, so that's what I came up with, sort of reasonable comparison. As we talk about, reasonable, as we talk about, um, the proposed contract, C D X.
Yeah, and I'm happy to um put this like in my slides. So that you don't, we don't have to like switch presentations, sorry.
Yeah, the information, I went to the budget committee that looked at the weight scales, this is just twenty-four, twenty-five compared. There's a few towns here missing, I don't know if that matters, but.
Missing in my list or missing in your list? Oh, that's a different.
Yeah, so this was, this was the, um, I don't think it's together.
Is that the one with?
Yeah, Raymond, that's the one, actually, that's the one for negotiations that we updated, so it has to run.
Oh, is it the same list that I saw, okay, but just reorganized, okay.
Sounds like towns.
Right, and what I added was I, like, there's different levels of scale.
Yeah, right, it's hard because some people start, it's, we try to focus on the start and the end because some have seven steps, some have tens, some have five, it's hard to.
So I don't know, I don't know if it was better than the other student, but did you get lost on the?
I just wanted to know, yeah, it's like, so, yeah, it's good for me.
Thank you.
Okay, and then we can discuss which, what do you want to?
I don't, I need to prove it.
And don't worry about my notes on that.
I don't, I don't think so. Um, it's just informational, or deliberate. Um, you're, if someone else wants to include something for their, for our representative, let me know. I'll add it to the, add it to the PowerPoint. Um. Well, anything else informational? All right, fellow comments?
I don't know, it's tri- street. I wasn't actually planning on saying anything, but there's been a lot of stats, so, so a couple of comments. One question, um, is it, is it the intention now, Chairman, to put in tax impact uh, numbers for the default budget? In the last, um, draft form, I didn't see that and I was wondering if that was the case. Or that would be the case. Um.
It's the same. I also think it's on three thousand dollars difference, so I think it would be the same.
Not stated. My, I heard a comment about the process that was being made, that had been going on since September. I just want to make sure my comments about process control and communication date back to twenty twenty, that was my, my comment on that. Um, I also, I, I liked the members' comment about other religions. Apparently picking the seventh most, most popular religion in the world to start with, but there are five others before that. And so it would be great to include one of those, uh, eventually, as a, as a matter of balance. And finally, Madam Chairman, I applaud your, um, attempt to work together with other bodies in town. Um, and, uh, because I know that, uh, when the supervisor, the building supervisor was embarking on the solar project, he joined, that he came to the, the energy committee, I think another member on the board was also there. Um, and I, I believe it was productive and it introduced him to people and so on, so forth. Um, I was disappointed and, and take exception with the administrative view in its head, so dismissive comment that suggests energy committee either can hold a non-public session or can't keep a conference. That was unfortunate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other fellow comments? Oh, it's a dookie. We don't need it non-public, are there any previous reservations?
Yep.
Okay.
You can put them.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So you're all on Saturday?
Yep. Big fun.